In terms of infrastructure. We did go out and look and confirm our hypothesis around is there really a need for 150 more hospitality units? We worked with the AZ Office of Tourism. They did confirm that need and more is there. On the affordable housing side, again, to kind of understand what does it mean to have workforce housing? What's the right price point? We did work with ECNA and get confirmation from them in writing around price points and demand, and that justified our approach. So when you think about this approach, it's not just a hospitality development. It's a wellness focused development that blends into the land. You can hear from Arcana about their vision. That's a big driver of doing something different that matches the character of the community environmentally, but also just the feeling when you're there. We spent a lot of time on that. As Jess said, the units are factory built, much more efficient and environmentally friendly that way. The amenities that we spoke about, I do want to point out, we got feedback from the community. They are open to the public. Not all of them, but most of them are open to the public. There's a restaurant, there's a spa. So it's not just about the tourists benefiting, but the community can as well. Worked with the county a lot on crafting the views from Highway 64. I mean, I drive along that road as well. The opportunity is huge and it's important what it looks like from the road. So those renderings, we put a lot of time into as well. On the workforce housing, Jess did a good job explaining. We are having the parks. We are also working with Habitat for Humanity to allocate several of the lots for Habitat for Humanity to be able to service their end users and those at that right price point. We did meet with residents as well in the county. The density actually got reduced through that process and it was already far less than what's officially possible in the regulations. So I think from a community perspective, we really, as Jess said, tried to adapt to the plans here, right? There's plenty to go around in a development like this. We're happy to kind of make sure that we checked all those boxes with the character of the community and the letter of each of the plans. Did spend good time with Chief Trotter. Thanks for being on the call, Chief. Making sure we're aligned with his needs in order to service this program. Fire district down the road sounds terrific. And did reach out to neighboring parcel owners, including the project to the south. We can work with them on sharing some of the costs. There's improvement requirements on the turn lanes and we've started those discussions as well. So it's not just completely siloed development. And we'll bring more jobs to the community. We're anticipating around 130 for the hospitality. And the team is important because it's important that if we bring this forward, we're going to follow through, make this happen. That's a big part of the value proposition here. Myself certainly, but Arcana has been with me since the beginning. It was part of the reason we pushed so hard for the development is they're the right partner, not just in building homes, but in designing the aesthetic in the field. Aginski Capital is committed to driving funding, but beyond just Aginski, we've had discussions with institutional investors in the hospitality space that want to grow. They're looking for projects just like this. I don't see any issue in securing funding from multiple sources. And as you know, CDNE, they're top notch and have done terrific. Just did an outstanding job here, so I'm not going to drain anything here. It is planned to be a phased implementation. The reason for that is financially, it's a bit more beneficial and some of the plating. But to be clear, this is a project that needs both elements to be successful. We're building the infrastructure in the first phase for both of the projects, right? The different segments of the project. So we're going to build out the full sewer system and have the water system when we do phase one. It's in our interest for a variety of reasons to do phase two. So economically, but also we want to use some of the workforce housing for people working at our program as well. Not significant, but we do. I mentioned Habitat for Humanity. This is a picture we did meet with them. Nice homes that I think would fit in really well here and serve that community. How many? We're in discussions. It could be a lot. It's a really nice program for that side of the development. Let me turn it to my friends at Arcana to just go through a little bit about their element of the program.
Thanks, Ryan. It's Jeremy Hill here, one of the co-founders of Arcana and happy to share a little bit about the Arcana experience. And when I first dreamt up the idea of Arcana in 2019, the idea of it was to help reconnect people with nature, which is really important for me and what I believe is actually very similar to what Commissioner Best was discussing around the importance of educating people around the value of nature and how transformative it can be for their experience in this area. And what we're drawn to is the beauty of the natural landscape around us. So Ryan, if you could just take us to the next slide here. So the purpose of our business is to help people from, that don't necessarily have the opportunity to spend time in nature every day, to connect with nature in a way that they can really develop the benefits of nature. And as we all know, when you spend a day or two days, it can really have a significant impact on your well-being, just immersing yourself in nature. It's really important. And we want people to be able to experience that in a way where they feel safe and they feel like they're not having to be fully immersed in nature in a way that they have discomfort. So this is a way for people to dip their toe in the water without necessarily having to be fully immersed in a more robust camping experience. So this is a lighter form of entering into nature. You know, our vision is to be the world's best steward of nature and be a leading nature-first hospitality category hospitality group. And using science and data is a really important part. There's a lot of information out there today's day and age with wellness and what people are telling you and touting you is good, but we really want to use data and solid backed information to enhance the experience for people while they're on the property. I'm not going to go over the site plan. Mr. McNeely did a fantastic job and thank you very much for that. This is a rendering that was not displayed and just gives you a sense of, you know, some of the, maybe a little bit exaggerated here, just the mountains in the distance, but it just gives you a sense of the imagination that you can aspire to while being in a natural setting like this. Okay, we've looked at these images as well. And again, Mr. McNeely did a fantastic job. So thank you, everyone.
Appreciate it, Jeremy. Thanks for your partnership. Ian or Aaron?
Yeah, I can speak to these slides, Ryan. Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Ian Braun. I'm the owner of CDNE. My address is 618 East Route 66, Flagstaff, Arizona, 86001. I've been working with Ryan on and off for the past eight years on various projects in Copio County. This one, of course, has me really excited because of some of the unique civil infrastructure that we're going to be bringing to the Valley area. Jess did a great job of actually touching on all the civil infrastructure that we're going to be implementing as part of this development. But I just want to touch on a few key points on each slide. As Jess said, we are going to be developing two water wells as part of this project. The hydrogeologist that we were consulting with said that one water well would be sufficient for the size of this development, but we are going to be drilling two to have a redundant well. And that will also give us the opportunity in the future to potentially team with neighboring properties to form a water district. The wastewater system will be treating part of the wastewater to an NSF 350 standard suitable for reclaim reuse. And that was what we were going to be using to irrigate any new landscaping. I'd just like to, one interesting fact, I designed a lot of onsite wastewater systems in Valley for single-family residences. The last one I did out there went in for $35,000 for just a single-family home. So with all of these units that we're developing, the onsite wastewater system that we will be implementing for the development will be expensive, but it will actually be cheaper than individual onsite wastewater systems. If you could go to the next slide, Ryan. So the exhibit you're seeing right here, this is something we collaborated with Robert Trotter on. Basically is to have a full water system capable of fighting fire. So this is an exhibit showing every hydrant location and that there will be a hydrant within 500 feet of every dwelling unit. We're going to be designing for 1,500 gallons per minute for two-hour fire flows. That's 180,000 gallons of storage. There's going to be 180,000 dedicated gallons of storage for fighting fire. And there's going to be 400,000 total gallons of storage onsite. You can go to the next slide, Ryan. So we have submitted for an encroachment permit with ADOT. We did a traffic impact statement and we did a preliminary. So the traffic impact statement determined that we would need right and left turn lanes, which given the traffic on 64 is not surprising. As Ryan mentioned, we can potentially team with neighboring properties to even extend these turn lanes. But we were given a preliminary approval from ADOT based on these calculations to move forward to construction drawings. And then I also wanted to point out that we will, which Jess touched on, we will be improving emergency access routes along High Grove Road as well. And we did have some discussions with the Sheriff's Department about this and we received some positive feedback on how we were improving site access. You can go to the next slide, Ryan. And Jess already went all through this. I just wanted to leave this here on a slide of how the project is cited with some of the similar type projects in the area. And Jess, of course, touched on this already, so I can hand it back to you, Ryan.
Okay. Yeah, thanks a lot. So we went a bit late. Alex was going to join us tonight, but I'll just speak for him. He's passionate about the tiny home space. Aginski Capital's done $100 million deals before. He and I were working on buying a tiny home manufacturing company. To be honest, that's how we found Arcana, who was really a good partner. So he has been out there with me, been invested in the project since the beginning. And hopefully if we get to the Board of Supervisors, he'll join to speak and take questions as well. So just to close, thanks for listening. When we think about why is this right here? We took a very collaborative approach, working with the county and the community and plan to continue to do that. It's a comprehensive solution kind of end to end from hospitality to the workforce housing. And a piece about the workforce housing, just wanted to bring back is that it's not just lots that are available and there's electricity, maybe. They're fully improved lots. So I think Jess's point was well made that although there's already tons of lots, and I own some of them, it's expensive to turn that lot into a home with an individual water and septic system. At the price point that we're looking at here, I think it makes the value proposition drastically different from just getting your own lot and trying to make it happen. And we've got a very committed team. It's not just me and Ian working together here. So thanks again for your time. Happy to open it up to questions or to community comments.
Does anyone on the commission have any questions for the applicant? All right, I'm not seeing anything. So thank you, Ryan, for your time.
Sure.
And we're not to public comment yet, so hold that hand real quick. Okay, so if none of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant, then we'll let Ryan go back to mute and we'll open it up to public comment. This is just public comment. You're addressing the commission directly. And I'll call on you in order that you raise your hand and then we'll get to anyone who may be on an actual phone call. We will ask that you state your name and your address for the record and you will have a maximum of three minutes for your comments. So with that, I will open it to public comment. I know somebody already had their hand up once. Okay, Michelle, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Michelle Okelsby Flores and the address is 2848 Silver Bear Lane in Valley, Williams. I like, I will say, I do like the progressions that have happened since the community meeting in February. I like that they have reduced some of the work housing lots, so there's not as many. My biggest concern, there's two things, is the traffic. The traffic coming off of that easement road, either directly from the subject and/or on High Grove going on to 64. Turn lanes, do they really think turn lanes will suffice when there's a potential of 300 more cars per day in that area? Because it's hard enough, I'm not down there full-time at all, I'm part-time. And so when I get down there, I've had to go back roads just to get to the Chevron station or get to the Chevron where the water well is. So that is a concern, is the access. And if there's going to be backup on High Grove, if more people are coming on High Grove. And then with the proposed fire district that you're talking about, is that only going to benefit this community or will it benefit the entire residents that own out there? I know that's a question, but that's a concern as well. And that's really it, because we can't talk about the other concern I have. So, but thank you, I appreciate the time.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to comment on this case at this time? Okay, I have Miranda. If you want to go ahead and unmute and state your name and address for the record and you can have three minutes.
Awesome. Hello, I'm Miranda Baldolsky. My address is 514 East Laramie Drive, Williams, H.
Oh, you got muted somehow.
Sorry, I'm back. You get my address?
No, we got, I think all I got was Williams.
Okay, so 514 East Laramie Drive, Williams, H. Technically Valley. Anywho, so I just want to point out there are currently over 285 vacant lots for sale right now in Valley and many existing subdivisions that still lack basic infrastructure and attention. So I feel before moving forward with new rezones, I believe we need a thoughtful and transparent approach, one that prioritizes what's already here, supports existing residents and truly encourages robust community input. I also feel the process for public participation needs to be more accessible so more voices can be heard. Workforce housing also creates a revolving door. The revolving door effect leads to short-term stays than rather encouraging people to grow roots and become part of the community. And then another thing, I just, also I want to acknowledge that it's awesome to see the progression of taking the input of our community engagement meeting. So I do appreciate that. But I do have that concern of, I know Jesse mentioned it's not split zoning, but I want to better understand that if it is, any, if it's split zoning, and he said it wasn't, but I have questions. And then lastly, the road district or road improvement, exactly what roads do they plan on improving? The whole valley or just their area? And that is my comment. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to comment on the case this evening? Okay, anybody on a phone call that wishes to comment? If you want to go ahead and speak up. Okay, I'm not seeing any more public comments, so I'm going to go ahead and close it to public comment. And Miranda, just so you know, your hand is still raised. And open it up to commission discussion. So we'll just go around the room and get a feel for how the commissioners' thoughts and whether or not they think they can make the findings. Let's start with Commissioner Tohe.
Good evening again. I don't have any comments. Well, let me take that back. I just want to say thank you to Ryan and the presenters for just volunteering and to be a part of the, to really be part of the Valley area plan. I appreciate that. And even though you didn't have to, you chose to. And then just taking care of the corridor to the Grand Canyon, I think that's very important so that you're blending in and I appreciate that too. So I don't have any further comments. I can make the findings on both counts. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's clear in this case that the applicant and his team have really done everything they can to try to comply with what the county and our community wants to see. So I can make the findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Best.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Valley is certainly an interesting place. I don't know if there's another place like that in the whole country. And so to have somebody come in like this with a big plan, I think is good news. I've expressed some concepts before and I didn't want to really chat with the applicant about it, but I'll just emphasize them a little more when you showed one picture of the big picture with the big mountains in the background. So Fakie, you showed a lot of scraping. And everybody should understand that we are high desert. When you scrape, when you get rid of native plants and disturb native topsoil, the most likely thing to come back is an invasive plant that you have to deal with. Native plants are very delicate and once you disturb them, they frequently just lose the battle. Invasives are better at it. So the most efficient way to deal with that is to be very, very careful what you disturb. Disturb what you must and leave everything that you can alone if you consider it an asset. Now, if you're going to irrigate it and plant something there, fine. But just scraping and assuming that natives will come back doesn't usually work. I talked a little about responsible tourism and that's more than we can handle right here, right now. I hope that the county will get more involved in that in an organized way, but from your description of your values, maybe you're going to help us. Maybe you're going to come up with some posters and ways to communicate with people which enhances their experience and at the same time makes them more responsible. You know, when you're in church, you're pretty careful what you do. And so the more people feel like they're in a very beautiful and sacred place, the more they take care of it. So if you can come up with stuff like that, maybe we'll be copying you. And it sounds like you have those values. And so I can make the findings based on what I've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Commissioner Berger.
I was just out on this particular site just about a week ago, helping with the North Rim Fire Drive. So I have a real passion for the area and I'm understanding a lot more. I mean, when we used to talk about Valley, they're like, that place way out there and there's nothing there. And now everybody's finding Valley. So I think it's super important that we have the depth and the experience that your team brings. I think my only concern is just the safety of the people that are driving through there. It's got to be first and foremost to protect the tourists, to protect the people that are being housed there. I'm with Commissioner Best on teaching good practices and good stewardship. It is the most incredible, one of the most incredible areas in the country. And I'm just happy somebody came forward that put this much thought into it and didn't just slam everything in there. We've seen a lot of that come and go in the country, particularly in Arizona, as you know, it's growing very fast. So with that all said, I believe I can make the findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Leslie.
Thank you. I would like to commend Mr. Scott and his team on what they have put together and presented to us. It feels thorough. Other commissioners have stated good topics as well and I'm in the same boat with them. But I can tell you without question that I can make the findings for this project because it's been put together and presented very well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Hayward.
I can not repeat everyone else's comments, but I agree with all of them. You guys did a good job and I have no trouble making the findings for both of the motions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is Chair Burton and I really like the project. And as much as I would think all of us wish ADOT would widen 64 into multiple lanes, I think that's, you know, if you had a dime for every wish. I think that it truly takes a big project like this to kick off the needed infrastructure in communities like this that they just, they need a big investor to get it started and then it can go from there. And I think that this is something that will allow that infrastructure to potentially expand and get better. And I understand from the perspective of one of the comments that we got, you know, why can't we take care of what's, you know, the existing subdivisions? But honestly, that's up to those owners of those lots to come up with their own, you know, local road plans and CCNRs and all of that stuff. So that's going to take the owners of those lots to actually accomplish something there. I think as far as like the main positives for me on this, I really do like the overall design. I like the fact that it's adding jobs and adding workforce housing and that it's developing infrastructure. So it's not one-offs for, you know, it's going to actually have sewer, an alternative sewer treatment type setup, but it'll still have something for the whole community there and potentially aid in getting a much-needed fire department, a taxing fire department for the vicinity. So with that, I can make the findings and it sounds like everyone else can as well. And so we are going to need two motions here. The first for the two zone changes and the second for the subdivision plat approval. And these are both recommendations for the Board of Supervisors. So it's just a reminder for the public that there's still more time to comment on this. So if anyone would like to make those two motions, I will entertain that now.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of Zone Change 25-005 and Zone Change 25-006 to the Board of Supervisors.
I would like to make the second on that to approve.
Okay, so the first one we're doing is the zone change. So we have a motion by Vice Chair Wilson and a second, it sounded like Commissioner Berger.
Yes.
All right. So all those in favor, Commissioner Tohe.
Aye.
Vice Chair Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Best.
Aye.
Commissioner Berger.
Aye.
Commissioner Leslie.
Aye.
Commissioner Hayward.
Aye.
And this is Chair Burton. I also vote aye. That motion passes. All right, I will entertain a motion for the subdivision plat, the approval for, the recommendation for approval for the subdivision plat. Who wants to step up for this one? Vice Chair Wilson, you're muted if you're making the motion. Vice Chair Wilson, you're muted if you're making the motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve S U B 25007 to send it on to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Best.
I'll second.
I will second.
Okay, and I think Vice Chair Wilson got in there first. All right, so I have a motion by Commissioner Best and second by Vice Chair Wilson. All those in favor, Commissioner Tohe.
Aye.
Vice Chair Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Best.
Aye.
Commissioner Berger.
Aye.
Commissioner Leslie.
Aye.
Commissioner Hayward.
Aye.
And this is Chair Burton and I also vote aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we have another call to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to address this Commission for items not on the agenda? If so, please raise your hand. All right, I'm not seeing any. So it is 7:27 and I will call the meeting adjourned. So everyone have a great evening.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Good night.
Bye.
Congrats to the applicants.